I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Okay, welcome everyone to the November 6th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report in the name of the bills, I see Mr. Repole is not in tonight. So, am I handling the financial report?
Well, you can ask me any questions and I'll give you the answers.
Perfect, alright. We have a motion to approve the financial report in the name of the bills?
Approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have two budget amendments, budget amendment 2020-02. We're going to take $6,680 from CESE funds and credit that amount to the EBD accounts for contract services. This money will be used for criminal investigation purposes.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment 2020-02.
Sumo.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second amendment is 2020-03, seizing $1,500 from CESE funds and crediting that to investigative funds for the Elton Police Department for criminal investigation purposes.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment 2020-03.
Sumo.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Chief, I think you've been keeping everyone up to date on all the positive activity of the Zero Tolerance and it's been fantastic.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the Maryland Rural Development Court. Do you want to come on down? I think we've got three seats there, hopefully, I know we have a PowerPoint.
We did.
You did?
We can't, with technology.
Very good, that's fine. But you had Plan B ready?
I, well, I got a phone call to meet you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm going to turn it over very quickly and soon if you can sit that down. But MRDC has been in the Family Education Center, based on lease with the town for three years, three years now. In that time, we've expanded our Head Start. We've done really good work with our Early Head Start and we have worked with the county to, and the town, with the Hollingsworth Landing now, Hollingsworth Landing Community Association, where we have held several events, back to school events, we've held movie nights, we've with the Paris Foundation, Mike Seer, he's one of our board members too. So, we've got an opportunity now from our Early Head Start program to pretty much double the amount of children we're going to be able to serve, but it's going to take some work to the building. We're not asking for money, we're just asking for permission to alter the building. So, you have the PowerPoint here. Tammy Duck is my GED director and Linda Woodside is our Early Head Start director. They will answer all the questions and I will sit down and be very quiet. Oh, I shouldn't have.
Okay, we can go, just go through the pages and, very good.
So, MRDC's mission is working in partnership with governmental and non-governmental agencies. We provide opportunities for families to become self-sufficient and create a strong and sustainable rural Maryland by providing community and educational services for those of you. That essentially says in a nutshell what we do in the Family Education Center, Early Head Start, Head Start Services and RAP Services for Adult Education in partnership with Cecil Community College. Okay, other programs out of that building, Paris Foundation holds programs in our building on the weekend, the guest program, tonight they're actually holding their last cooking class for the Hollingsworth family community. We have the Judy Center comes in, they provide playgroup. Yep, yep. And then, obviously, we do have the movie nights, what, once a month since June, we've had movie nights there. We've had two back to school jams where we've provided services to families going back to school. Had great support from Elton Police Department out there, they help us, they come out, they play kickball with the children this summer and August, that was a lot of fun. So, that's going to cover Early Head Start.
So, I just, most people know about Head Start, it goes way back until the 60s. In 1995, they started looking at early Head Start. And really where that came from was as we looked more in terms of brain development and how critical it is, zero to five is really that window of time when it's so important to be working with children. So, that's where early Head Start came into play. The other thing we do is a lot of two generational approach. So, we're working with the children, but we're also working with those families. We're helping them to become self-sufficient, working, going to school, being able to support their families. The other thing is we talk a lot about school readiness, and you think school readiness in babies, but truly, that's where it starts. And we do it through pledge. We teach them not only in terms of educational things, but we're also teaching them social, emotional development, so that when they go to school, they're ready to learn. And then the final thing we do is we really look at the community resources and we say, how can we collaborate? How can we bring all the things we need together to support these families and break down barriers? So, that's really our mission in terms of early Head Start.
Let me ask you a question, I understand Head Start, but what goals are measured with that? First of all, what are your age groups or your ages for the early Head Start?
It is, essentially, we work with expectant moms through the pregnancy and then up to the age of three, and then we help transition them either to Head Start or to the public school.
So, is there a realization for the goals measured for the early Head Start? I know somebody might be pregnant, as you just mentioned, but you also may have someone who said one, two, or three years of age.
Yes, yes. So, in terms of goals, yes, we do look at goals in terms of things for school readiness for children, but you're saying, am I understanding your question correctly?
You're teaching and you're directing the people that are involved with the early Head Start and saying what are you trying to measure?
What are we trying to measure in terms of working with the children?
Yes.
Yes, so what are some of the fundamental goals in terms of, I mean, we look at things in terms of making sure that children are immunized. We look at, we have a program called Teaching Strategies Gold, where we look at all of the different domains, language, cognitive, social, emotional, where we're looking at, what are these developmental milestones that children should be hitting at this particular age and making sure that we're providing a setting so that they are able to hit those milestones? We also do a lot of work with children that have developmental disabilities, so we have a percentage that we have to work with, 10%, but we always hit way beyond that, because we believe in early intervention. If we're working with children early, then we're going to be able to make sure if there's a speech delay, we've, we've been.
Yes, thank you. Out of the 68 children and families, would you say that most of them are in the immediate area then? Are they traveling in or is it?
We serve all, we serve county.
All of Cecil, okay, very good.
All Cecil County, yes.
How are they referred to?
They are referred from all different places. We get from the Judy's care, from the Health Department, through the Cecil County Public Schools, the homeless shelters, because categorically, if somebody is homeless or if they're in the foster care system, we don't look at income, they're automatically into our program. So, Department of Social Services, so we get referrals from all different kinds of entities.
Thank you.
So, the purpose for the expansion is that we only have space in the building itself for half of the early Head Start children that we actually serve. The other half are served in a home base program where our staff actually go off to each children's homes and we work with the parent and child in their home. The initiative that has brought this on is that we want to bring all the children in center. It offers the parents an opportunity to go to work, go to school, and the children come in and they start working on their developmental milestone in a school setting. We don't call ourselves childcare, we call ourselves school, because that's where we are, we're a school-based setting. So, the purpose is to bring in an additional, what, 21 children into the school setting?
What is the hours?
We are open from 7:30 to 5:30. But most of our children are eight.
Eight to four. Thank you.
I wasn't getting it, she was.
And the majority of the children arrive by bus? Uh, no, self-transport now.
It's all self-transports already?
All?
We do have, we do have a bus, but we utilize our bus really for field trips or social events.
So, those that are homeless, evidently they are brought by cab in most instances?
We do have a relationship with cab companies in this community to assist the families who need help getting there. We offer the same service for our adult education RAP services, for those adults that would like to come to adult education classes in the evening in the Family Education Center. We offer not only transportation to get there, but we also offer dinner and to offer childcare. And that way, they come as a family unit, they have dinner at 5:30 PM, at 6:00 PM, the children go off to the childcare room, the adults go off to the GED room, and each of them have their time, homework assistance, play, whatever it is for the children, and the adults can focus on their class. And then at 8:00 PM, everybody comes back together and if they need a ride home, we have taxis, they're waiting. Okay, so, if you skip over, we actually gave you a schematic, right now, what you're looking at is actually existing offices, storage space, conference room. We're proposing to bring in contractor who would renovate those spaces into three classrooms that will serve six infants and then two classrooms that will serve eight toddlers in each classroom. So, we'll need to add hand washing sinks, because that's a requirement in all of our classrooms, is that we have hand washing sinks and changing stations for all of our children. We'll need to add restrooms for our emerging potty trainers, so we'll need a faculty restroom added. We'll need to add some egress doors, because all of our classrooms, we were required to have a form of egress out of every classroom. So, that is an exterior change that you will be able to see on the outside of the building. And it'll all be done through a contractor, we have the plans to do it, we just need the town to say yes, we can alter the building that belongs to you. We will be in this renovation adding security doors on both wings of the school, and if you're not familiar with the school, it's essentially an L, and there's two wings, a Head Start wing and an Early Head Start wing. We propose to put in security doors, so people actually have to be buzzed into the wings that way, people from the public can't just get to our children unless they're actually accessing them. So, it's a little, another level of security on the building. And as we go further, we'll be talking about putting an office trailer outside, it's because we need to keep our children inside, where they're safe and inside the building. We will need an additional playground. For those of you who are not familiar with the building, on one side there is a drainage ditch, it is the same side that we're proposing to put the classrooms on, we're hoping that in between the drainage ditch and the building, we can add additional playground space, where we're barred to have 75 square feet per child, and they need direct access, so through the egress doors, they would be able to access that playground directly. Any questions, Pat?
Yes, do you have requirements, like mandatory days that they have to attend throughout the year?
We do, we do, we do. So, it just depends on the age of the child and which program they're in.
And their transportation requirements, I guess would come into play, right?
There are not transportation requirements with any of the Head Start performance standards. However, if they have a challenge getting there and they need the services, MRDC steps in to make sure that that happens. So, they are left out and said, we can't get a ride there. We do access public transportation when possible, we access taxis when possible, we do have an early Head Start van, that if we need to go out and pick up a family, we can do that. We do have parent committees where they are learning how to be in a setting just like this, and learning to be in a governing body. And so, we transport them to those meetings, so that they can get that training and understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, impact on services, so obviously, if I am taking away offices and storage and conference room space, I'm impacting the ability for our staff, one, to do their job, but two, for Paris Foundation, the playgroup, the Hollingsworth Landing Association, all of those groups, they use our conference room. So, what we're proposing is to, on the opposite side of the building, is to bring in a temporary office trailer that will allow us to have conference room and offices to accommodate the staff that are being displaced, the organizations. We don't want to not serve that community. We've done a lot in the last three years to really open the doors of that building and allow the community to come in and use it as a true community building. And so, we want to continue to promote that. It's really important in that community that we continue to promote those services. So, what we'd like to do is bring in, get your permission to talk to zoning, bring in a trailer, have it located on the other side of the building, so there's still, our staff still have access, they still have a GED room where they have all computers, because we have computers for all of our students. It needs a restroom, obviously. But then, that would lead into future plans, which I know has started the conversation of the empty lot that sits there next to the Family Education Center, possibly someday having a community center built there. And that would be MRDC in partnership with Paris Foundation to bring in a true community center, which would then link the two entities together, where we have child services on one side, we have community services on the other side, and in the middle, they're mingling. So, one adult education night, you've got adults in one building learning, you've got children in another building learning, you've got meals being prepared in the middle in the kitchen. We've got playgrounds that are shared space. And so, this is the start of what we envision as the future of what the Hollingsworth Manor community needs, is MRDC and Paris Foundation and the Community Center. First, we've got to stand for our babies.
Have you got your hands on this trailer yet?
I don't, I don't. I'm in the process of it, but I didn't want to go too far until we met with you all and we have permission to move forward.
You have one that you're looking at?
I do have a couple that I'm looking at, yes, sir.
So, they're going to be trailers, they're not going to be a portable classroom that you can convert if needed?
It will be similar to a portable classroom, yes.
The, you know, I have, I do have interest in that community center idea down there, and, you know, we're using the word as future, but let me, let me ask this, how quickly could, could that possibly happen?
That would depend on funding. It's a matter of knowing that we have the ability to move forward, writing grants is time-consuming, looking for grants is time-consuming. We have the ability to do it, but we need to know that we're able to do it.
Understand.
That we're able to move forward, that we don't go out and look for these grants and apply and then, you know, be told, no, you can't use the property.
Yes, ma'am.
As Sammy said, I think, you know, Mike, MRDC, we have this idea in our heads, and, you know, we met with his board, who came and we walked the area, and it was eerie hell, the exact, his, their plans are ours. And if you want to know how quickly, we would like to do it next Tuesday, but you guys got to come up with a couple million dollars.
There you go.
Other than that, it becomes an issue of, how do we build, what do we build, what makes it those sense, where are we getting the funding from? But I can tell you, the guy behind me is about to jump and say, let's go do it. I'm about to jump and say, let's go do it. This is the smartest plan that we've been able to come up with, bragging a bit about Tammy, to make the transition easier. That trailer will disappear, the new building will come, and it'll be, you know, a breezeway between the two or somehow connected, and we just move forward. That's the, that's the plan, that's, that's the future. It could happen in two years, it could happen in five years. It's, I can't foresee it being longer than, you know, a four-year act.
But the early Head Start funding needs to go, we got it. Yeah, we got it moving. We have the, we have the renovation, the current renovation request, we have those ones.
And the operating funds for the expansion.
Yes, we're ready to go.
Very good, nice.
Have you talked to someone about, I heard you mentioned portable buildings, have you talked to anybody about that?
I put out some feelers, but like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't ready to jump, until you know.
Need to throw names out, but I would suggest that you may talk to Greg Willis.
Okay.
Just to find out some of the ins and outs, because they've done it through the schools. Might be some kind of a quick, quick.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate it.
I mean, I'm not calling his name, I just know that, yes.
I didn't mean to talk to anybody in the community.
I didn't say Greg Willis, I didn't say it.
No, 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 I get it.
We didn't hear what you said, because you're saying, yeah.
I know you would be worried that way.
And he's the guy who's in the right direction.
Lou, what do you need from us?
The board should grant a general, make a decision generally, it has to go through Chip Charles Bromwell, the building official.
Yes.
They can't authorize you to build anything, it has to go through him to be code.
Yes, and we would, we would submit drawings and for permits and everything else.
Yeah, but the board actually, if you're inclined to.
Are you guys, are you okay to make a decision tonight?
Make a decision based on?
Yes.
You would authorize him?
I'm going to authorize you to handle it.
Okay.
All right.
So, all of the portable classrooms from Gilpin Manor destroyed? I'm sorry? The portable classrooms from Gilpin Manor, they all torn down or they just shored?
They approved.
A lot of times, those portable classrooms are rented and the company comes back to get them, so, I don't know whether by Gilpin Manor, I know when I was off, we had about 10 portables and they came back out.
Yes, and that's what we're looking at, is rental.
That's why I said, talk to Gary, just tell him Charlie give us century.
That's all, fine.
You got it, you're good, you're good.
Okay, I'd like to see if we can get a motion to allow MRDC to propose to change inside the building of the Family Education Center. And along with that, to have everything directed through our town administrator, Lou George.
Approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to bypass the agenda a little bit, and I'd like to invite up the Elton Housing Authority to come on down. Easement request. Lou, do you have anything on that you want to report first, or?
One thing I'd like to, I want to use my point, I can die and use it, but I've got it in a drawer. Right there is the easement.
You see that right there?
Peter Curts has contacted us about it, and that's the easement right there. It's a strip of land that the town acquired when the president commissioned in 1936, somewhere about that, and I don't think it's ever used except by the Elton Housing Authority. And I think as a formality, or the Housing Authority moved forward with its plan to actually have a recorded easement on that land for its use. So, Peter and Charles Dix and David Holman came to convince the board that that's the right decision to make, is that true?
All right, tell us what we need to do and tell us a little bit about it.
Sure, well, thanks very much, and I think Mr. George did an excellent job sort of highlighting. So, long story short is, in connection and in partnership with the Housing Authority, my client, and Dave Holman is one of the principals, is going to be rehabbing and renovating the existing Elton Housing Authority building that's on Main Street. This is the one, 150 East, man, it's right next to the District Court Building. And I believe you guys are fairly well familiar with this project, it's been here for various permits and approvals throughout the past several years. But recently, we discovered that the access for the parking is located on this strip of land that's technically owned out of town. The building, the Elton Housing Authority building, was built in the 70s. To the best of our knowledge, this strip has always been used for access. I did, I was able to find some old aerial photos going back to the early 90s, which showed this exact setup here, and we believe it preceded that as well back to at least the 70s. As Mr. George pointed out, this strip was conveyed to the town back in the 1930s. It's obviously critical for this project to continue to have access to parking. It does appear that almost all of this strip of land is used exclusively to support this building for access, and presumably, there might be some utilities up here, there's a utility easement up here as well. So, what we would ask is that the board authorize, merit, sign easement. Now, just so you know, ownership of the building is staying in the Housing Authority, so the easement would be from the town to the Housing Authority, if that makes sense.
Is there going to be a sale of that property at any point, or is it going to stay in?
So, the current project would include a long-term lease from the Housing Authority to the entity of student development, it's called NBIID. But the Housing Authority is staying involved with the project, they're going to be a partner in the project, so the long-term vision, very long-term, is for this to stay with the Elton Housing Authority, and the use of the property isn't going to change, it's still going to be a housing project under the guidance of the Housing Authority.
The yellow highlight.
So, this yellow highlight here, this strip, is actually the strip of land that's owned by the town.
Oh, I see, it just came out yellow, okay.
Yep, so it's been highlighted. So, this big rectangle here is the Housing Authority's property, and this is what's being leased. This little strip here, and the courthouse is here, this little strip is technically owned by the town.
I'm sorry, I was looking at it as two different pieces because of the shadowing.
No, I'm sorry, this shadowing is actually where the paving is. So, here's Howard Street, you'll see that access comes over this strip owned by the Housing Authority for access to this parking and to this parking. So, the continued use and the permanent continued use of that access is critical to the project. And again, it's been used in that manner certainly since at least the early 90s, and we have every reason to believe it's been there since the 70s when the building was built.
Script of use, right?
Yeah. Can't do that against the government or else.
No, I know.
But, but yeah, same idea. Yeah, and we did look in the land records, we were surprised because we didn't find anything in the land records that shows that there was an easement done way back when, but let's face it, back in the 70s, things were a little bit more informal, because it was the Housing Authority presumably, sort of permission was granted and paving done.
So, when you say renovations, is there going to be like an overhaul of the building? Are we going to build a little?
The footprint's not going to change?
It's not.
No, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the footprint's not going to change, did I like, but they speak a little more about the project, yeah?
Yeah, it's an interior modernization, the HVAC, the finishes, new windows, the bridge that connects the main street needs to be rebuilt, will be some architectural features out there, some player box, it's kind of softened, that building's presence on the street. So, the unit kind of stays the same, although there are reconfigurations in these places, but really, it's, you've been in it lately, it's, you know, it's, it's been used well to avoid.
Yes, renovations for good.
Will you have market rate inside this building, or is it only at Rudy Park?
Just at Rudy Park, this will remain affordable senior.
It's 50 units right in there, right?
Yes.
So, can the easement just then go to the Elton Housing Authority and not be transferable? Should the property sell?
I'm sorry, the easement will be to the Elton Housing Authority.
But not transferable?
I don't know.
See, it would be tied to this building? Okay, so right now, Elton Housing Authority owns this building?
So, it's just the easement, not the property?
It's just the. So, this strip is going to be, remain owned by the town, so the town will continue to own this strip. That's correct. The easement simply authorizes this property to continue to be used for the benefit of this property. But again, the ownership of this property is remaining in the Elton Housing Authority, and the easement is being granted to the Elton Housing Authority, and it's specific to this property. So, the Elton Housing Authority, for example, couldn't say, well, you know, we're going to let someone else over here use the easement, it's tied to the use of this property. And we did draft an easement for that purpose, we've, I don't want to speak for Mr. Adams, but I believe he's looked at it and found it. And we did draft, uh, an easement for that purpose, we've, I, I don't wanna speak for Mr. James, but I believe he's looked at it and, and found it feasible.
I reviewed it, I've also gone out and walked the property as well.
Very good, do we have a, uh, any questions from the board? We have a motion to accept the easement with the Elton Housing Authority.
So, second?
Got a motion and a second? Uh, only comment I would make is, uh, the easement would be for sale also, so I just wanted to make that very clear. So is there, yeah, so it, it is for sale. So along with that, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Joe, the process for getting it signed at this point, what can we do? I've got a copy here, if Rob's got a pen.
We'll get it to you.
Thank you.
All right, Lou, you're on.
Resolution fourteen dash two thousand nineteen, parking meter holiday. Resolution, American Commissioner's designated November twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen through January second, two thousand twenty. Parking meter holiday in Elton. There is chapter ten point one-two, section ten point one-two zero five-zero A. Empirical suspension of provision provides that the American Commissioners may temporarily suspend enforcement of parking meters by resolution. Now therefore be resolved that in consideration of the downtown business district and the board's support of local businesses, including the holiday season, parking meter enforcement shall be suspended from November twenty-eighth through January second, two thousand twenty.
We have a motion to approve resolution R fourteen dash two thousand nineteen. Motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Also have a proclamation, uh, twenty nineteen, Small Business Saturday. A proclamation from the American Commissioner, the town of Elton declaring November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, Small Business Saturday in Elton. Whereas according to United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States, representing ninety-nine point seven percent of all businesses with paid employees in our nation. Hard to believe that with Amazon, but I guess that's, that happens. Whereas small businesses, employees, that's forty-seven point three percent of the employees in five sectors of the United States and are responsible for sixty-four point nine percent of new, net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. And whereas the vast majority of consumers who choose to shop at Small Business Saturday do so in order to visit small, independently owned retailers or restaurants. And whereas the American Commissioner of the Town of Elton supports local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhood. Now therefore, be it known that the American Commissioners of the Town of Elton nearby proclaim November thirtieth as Small Business Saturday in Elton, and encourage everyone to support a local business community.
Fantastic, we have a motion to approve proclamation P seventeen dash two thousand nineteen, Small Business Saturday. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
One more proclamation, proclamation eighteen dash two thousand nineteen, Municipal Government Works. A proclamation, American Commissioner of the Town of Elton declaring the month of November two thousand nineteen, Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of Elton. Whereas the Town of Elton was established as Cecil County's seat in seventeen eighty-seven, and has evolved as Cecil County's largest, most progressive municipality. And whereas Elton joins a hundred and fifty-six other municipalities in Maryland, proudly serve their respective residents and business communities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsible level of government, allowing citizens direct access to elected officials, observe the operations of their government, and benefit from many services provided by their government. And where in effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, Town of Elton is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by providing essential governmental services, maintaining access to safe drinking water and providing for wastewater treatment, maintaining parks and supporting recreation activities, promoting economic development and job opportunities and supporting local business, along with providing many other services and opportunities that help make Maryland a great place to live, work, and enjoy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the American Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand nineteen, as Municipal Government Works Month.
We have a motion to approve proclamation P eighteen dash two thousand nineteen, Municipal Government Works Month.
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this proclamation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The last, uh, thing we have, there is a request for waiver, alcohol beverage restriction. Uh, the name is, uh, Becky McMahon, I don't know if she's.
Becky's here.
Okay. She wants to, uh, Central Tavern, uh, she wants to have a waiver on the twenty-seventh of November from six till eleven P M, Downtown Thanksgiving Eve event. Becky, would you like to speak to the board about this, uh, this proposed alcohol waiver?
Come on down. Becky's due to be a new resident of the Town of Elton.
Cecil County resident, twelve days. Thank you for seeing me. One, I would like to apologize for the short nature of me coming in to ask for the waiver. We're in a very interesting time in downtown Elton, I believe. I believe that the tide is changing, and not only are all of us working extremely well together to help each other's businesses thrive and continue to be better. I think that we're gaining trust back from a vast amount of people that haven't been downtown and now are coming back. We're on the heels of an amazing event with the alumni event from October. And then also, these other events that we've had alcohol waivers for, where people were free to move about, to go in and have a drink at Jimmy's, or an appetizer at Minihands, or then come to me and have some dinner, and have a nice craft beer at Elk River. All those events have gone over without incident, and I'm very happy to be a part of it. The night before Thanksgiving is the biggest gathering night of the year. It's when people come home, it's when people go to see their friends and family. It is truly a night where people gather. And I just think that, on the basis of what we have going on in this town and the atmosphere, the feeling and the spirit and the family, that if we, I'm very good at promoting, very good social media, um, and now that we're working so well together, I'd like to promote it almost like a turkey trap. Come downtown, see what the town has to offer, come gather, come be married, come be with your friends, and it'll really be a nice kickoff for the holiday season. It's not really about the alcohol waiver at all, it's more about, we kinda looked at my numbers from last year, because I was told that the night before Thanksgiving has always been Mr. Nicholson's night, it has been. Jimmy and I have an amazing relationship, before I even asked the Elton Alliance if this would be a possibility, I went to him. Jimmy is one hundred percent of the mindset that he wants everyone to have a piece of the pie. It's not about, it's Jimmy's night, it's about, it's the town's time. So, everyone to know that he is one hundred about this. But it's not necessarily about the alcohol or walking around, it's about having that feeling of togetherness. So we're asking, and I do apologize again that it was short notice, I certainly won't do that again if we do this and it works out, I'm hoping we can do it going forward.
Very good, Chief, uh, is that correct, have we had any incidents on any nights with the alcohol waivers?
No, yeah.
Very good. Uh, how's the board feel? Okay, do we have a motion to authorize a, uh, alcohol waiver on eleven twenty-seven from six till eleven? Got a motion? Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
I'd like to have a Jimmy night and a Becky night.
It's gonna be an Elton night.
Elton, there we go.
An Elton night, because I'm thrilled to be here and then continue to grow with this.
That's, uh, that's my, uh.
All right, very good, I'm glad you brought up the Elton Alumni Night, we talked about it last meeting. Uh, I'd like to get that formal proclamation, I guess, for the next meeting, but I think that everyone, uh, since we talked about it at the last meeting, uh, throughout the town, we're gonna proclaim the first Friday in October as Elton Alumni Day.
Friday or first Saturday?
Friday.
Friday. Friday?
Yes, the first Friday, first Friday in Elton in October will be Elton Alumni Day. You okay with that, or do you need it to be a Saturday?
No, no, I just thought it was a Saturday, but Friday's day.
So we'll get the proclamation, and then we'll make that announcement when we, when we get it through, thank you guys. We had a little bit of discussion, uh, last year and the previous years about having the holiday decorating contest. We sent out a little email, asked the board the thoughts, and I think we came back with consensus that we're ready to move forward again with the decorating contest. So I wanted to kinda lay out the parameters of this. Deadline to register for the holiday decorating contest will be December thirteenth. And, uh, the board will take a trip around the Town of Elton like we did a couple other times, in the, uh, in the town bus, Louis's vehicle. And, uh, we're gonna go around and we're gonna determine who the winners are, and then we would announce the winners on December the eighteenth. Is the board okay with this?
Absolutely.
Very good, that's our, that's our game plan. One of the, uh, things I'd like to, uh, take a look at if we could, Lou. Our parking lot out here, uh, we have a lot, a lot of motor vehicles out there. And, uh, uh, the other day, not only did I come in to come into town hall, but also there was residents that were coming in to try to pay their town bills, and there, there was no parking spots. And, uh, I, I'm not so worried about myself, because I'll go across the street, or I'll take a couple loops and a couple turns, and I'll come back. But, uh, sometimes our residents, you know, that's who we're here to serve, and if we can make that happen. So, just some suggestions, maybe you could come up by the next meeting. You know, I, I actually had a, a discussion with the chief, uh, we talked a little bit, I didn't know how many of our officers were taking home, uh, police cars. He didn't respond back to me. If, if we allow, uh, some of the officers that are outside the cameras to take a police car home, we could probably free up four or five spots. That could help. Maybe we take a look at, seeing how we could secure that parking lot, the municipal parking lot a little bit better, maybe with cameras. Because I've talked to several of the employees, and they, uh, with the, with the walking traffic that goes through, the walkers, we've had incidents where the cars have been keyed, uh, airlit out of their tires, and happens all over, but it does happen over there, and I wouldn't wanna put anyone in that position, uh, all the time. Also, maybe we could take a look at Union Hospital and see if they would, uh, allow our employees maybe to park over at Union Hospital in the parking garage. Now, uh, we have to take a look at that and see if that's feasible or not. But I'd like to figure out how we could free up maybe at least three, four, or five more spots for the public. Because right now, we have two handicap spots, I think we've got two fifteen-minute parking, and we got one hour parking. So if we could free up four more spots for the public, I think that'd be great. So that was, that was my hope.
What, what, could we fence in the municipal parking lot?
That was actually, uh, brought up in the whole discussion, uh, if we, if we fenced it in where there couldn't be walkers through there, I think it would help.
And then maybe our employees would be more apt to park there.
Very possible. So Lou, that, that chores on you.
Good.
All right, maybe figure it out, maybe, maybe it, maybe it's a lot easier than we think to free up some spots.
Yeah, I'm quite sure if he encourages some of the employees who park there, I think those spots can be, uh, less than.
What about the town employee parking lot?
Over there.
Why do we use the municipal lot there? Uh, just for, for discussion.
Yes.
One thing that's probably possible, I see three of the town vehicles right in front of the spaces that we have for visitors to pay their bills. While we try to leave those three spaces open, and then it'd be six spaces right in front.
That'd be great.
That, that's a little bit easy problem, so.
Good, I think we can get that solved. All right, uh, so that was everything that I had. We're, I'm gonna ask the board to have a, a closed meeting to talk about the acquisition of real estate, and it's not gonna be any sequel. We're gonna talk about the armory, but I need to do it in a closed meeting, uh, there's a couple details that we need to talk about. But with that, Gene, you have anything? Charles?
Continue to carry the chief and the police staff, they have done an amazing job, uh, if you look at the newspaper, we're getting, uh, drugs off the street, it's always good for that to happen. And, uh, again, thank you for what you're there for.
Thank you.
Yeah, give an update on parking recreation report, um, getting held in classes on weekends. Sixty-four registered in the class include, uh, it includes slime time, painting, uh, party silly, signs, craft time, and Jack Leonard, uh, Jubilee. Weekday classes, they had ninety-five registered classes, include painting, party, uh, cupcake creation, uh, super top sports, sensory explorations, and move in, and, let's see, I have to look at the next page. Move in, grooving Halloween crafts, and some, and then canvas painting classes, two, uh, classes they had with twenty-two that registered. And then parents' night out, one activity with twenty-one that registered. They had a dance class, uh, classes that's twenty-one classes, hundred and fifty-four registered. The dance performed in, uh, the Elton Halloween Parade and won first prize for the, uh, performance group. The dancers are preparing for their holiday showcase, which will be held on Friday, December thirteenth, at six P M at Elton High School. And upcoming activities are the youth basketball league, um, for ages five to fourteen.
Thank you, Earl. All right, Rob?
Yes, I would like the board to consider canceling our December fourth meeting, or possibly moving the agenda to our workshop on the eleventh, as the Elton Alliance has scheduled their Small Business Person here that evening, and I think that we should attend.
What's on the agenda on the fourth?
At this moment, nothing.
What do we have for the workshop on the thirteenth?
The December workshop?
November.
Okay. Right now, it's tentative, uh, it's Delmar De Powers Annual Update. A discussion about water production, billing, audit, and rate study with new gen strategies and solutions. And meter pit installation at Friendship Heights. Those are all tentative.
Okay, how's the board feel about moving the, uh, meeting from the fourth to the eleventh?
And do you want it at the workshop time or at seven P M?
The ten, Christmas party is on the seventh of December, I think. Christmas count, Christmas party is December seventh.
The American Commissioners' party?
Yes.
I have a problem with the eleventh.
So, we definitely want our meetings back to back, or are we just gonna have one December or?
We just wanna handle it all with the workshop? There's nothing on the eleventh, correct, anything on the eighteenth?
For your, December eleventh, tentatively, there would be the, um, Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan. That, I have that tentative. And then on the eighteenth, that would be the announcement of your contest winners.
Can we just have one meeting on the eighteenth and provide everything? Okay, let's just have the one meeting on December eighteenth. Yeah, we're still within our charter, our charter states that we meet one, once a month, and so we'll meet on December eighteenth.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Very good, and Rob will pay for our, our, uh, tickets?
Our table?
Charity pity.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Earl.
Anything else, sir? Anything else, Rob?
No, I would just like to say that, you know, Becky commented how downtown is doing great, and everybody's pulling together as a team, and being down there every day, I can attest to that. And, and getting ready to enter my thirty-fourth year of being in business downtown, I can tell you, I've seen the highs, the lows, we are definitely on a high. And I hear people talking about it all the time, so we're doing great downtown.
So you've been here thirty-four years, and Elton's been good to you there, huh?
Yes, it has.
Oh, gee.
Uh, we didn't mention the Halloween Parade was fantastic, uh, I'm gonna thank, uh, Bobby Dance Studio for taking that over this year, and it was wonderful. I did miss a couple things on my report, uh, I'd like. I'd like to ask the board to support Mr. Sam Goldwater to the vacancy on the Board of Appeals. The term would expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. We have a motion to approve Sam Goldwater?
Aye.
We have a second, any discussion on Sam Goldwater? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to have Sam Goldwater on the Board of Appeals. We also need to appoint an alternate member to the Board of Appeals. I'd like to appoint Ms. Kelly Bender to the vacancy for the alternate member, and her term will expire January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Salute.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on Kelly? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, very good. All right, with that, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for our audience to say some fantastic things about the town of Elton. See none?
No, there was one.
Mr. Donnie Hicks, come on down. I think I know what Mr. Hicks has to say. I think we all saw it.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I appreciate your audience here tonight, we don't have any choice but to listen to me, but we've, I've been very patient, trying to be very understanding with my neighbors. Today was just something that just went too far today. We've had a number of business, and when they first opened up a number of years ago, we live with it and you know, there are definitely people who need help. We, and I appreciate what the mayor made a comment to the commissioners meeting about a month ago of them applying for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to get two new employees for our neighbors, which Elton's becoming a landing spot, a soft spot for landing, for homeless people, okay? I know there are people in need, I see this every day, Rob sees it, you all see it, okay? I see it every day, I have to live with it. I'm trying to run a business, today absolutely went over the top. I had Mr. Howard Plummer's family coming in, two members of family from Boston, two from Hyattville, and they were escorted by Woody Braywood. And Woody had to escort the ladies in my building because of the incidents going on next door. I had people there, and I don't mean to offend anybody, they dropped the N-word back and forth all day long, we could hear them inside. They dropped the MF, it was just absolute one threat to kill somebody right in front of our building while these people are coming in. We called nine-one-one, nine-one-one, you know you have to give me your life history, does anybody have a weapon? They're, I don't know, my lady should call me in the office. So by the time, I know that this has been discussed a number of years, someone hears the town to answer during dispatch, okay? Because I think the chief is well aware, by the time we go through the nine-one-one, they're gone. Two cone Chevy Impala with a male and a female, the other vehicle was a male, who pulled up alongside, threatened to kill him. And this was going on, and these people are listening to that, coming into my building. This goes on two, three, and four days a week. They can't handle my people coming in, and it's, it's gotta stop. We have to do something. Mr. Brandon, he spoke to the road company about a year and a half ago, and he said, you know, sensible thing that I've heard a long time, we need to get these people together, we need to find out where they're from, and we need to send them back there, okay? You would ask probably three quarters of the people next door, they are not Elton people. They are not from the town of Elton. I know we unfortunately are the county seat and we get everything, we got the health department, we've got the social services and so forth, okay? But we're just enabling them to come next door every day. And I, you see them pass through, I know they sit down here in the lobby, they go to the health, they go to the health department, sit in the lobby, they sit in the lobby of Cecil College, okay? And, but it's, it's just came to a point today, and you know, you haven't seen me down here before. We try and work with, when they first opened up, Gail Mayo was, she was right on everything. I don't know whether you know Ms. Gail?
Counselor, correct.
She was, she was tough. Any alcohol in breath you don't commence, so forth. I'm in and out of the building all hours of day and night, I see lots of, what goes on, and I can tell her in the morning what goes on. She's right on that day. Then we've had two changes, then we had Cassandra from Philly, she was tough. There's no lea, I see no relationship, I had to go, I had to walk next door today, hold the family, please, I'll be back, I had to walk next door today, they hang the phone up when we call, they want, they wish for us to call next door instead of calling the police, okay? And we tried, they must have cars, they hang the phone up, they hang up on all my ladies in the office when they call. And so I had to literally go next door, knock on the door, they all, they refuse to open doors, I yelled two to one that they did find the door, and, but it's just, today was just, it was really one of the final struggles.
Donnie, was it this car arguing with people that was on the corner or right, right up front?
I don't know whether it was an incident of, you know, you've been in the police seat all the time, you know, there was a girlfriend in another car with another guy, I don't know, I didn't witness it, okay, I just heard a conversation when they were coming in, so I went right out, and they were pulling away, and Patty in the office was saying, oh, they're pulling away now, okay? By the time you go through your, if you ever call nine-one-one, I give, I've worked in emergency service for a number of years, I know that's what they got, they have to take all this huge background, by that time they're gone. We tried giving them scripts and tagging them and so forth, whether they were picked one on lock, they, they were in the middle of the street, one car right at the wrong side of the other one, threatening to kill the people in the car. Now, you know whether it's a night old weather or not, but just any age you can't hate that, so, just as a, okay? You know, till we're done with. But it's just getting worse, and I think anybody comes in over to North Street Bridge during the day, you can, you can see those people, I don't know, neighbors have put up no trespassing signs, we had to put them ten feet up in a tree because they ripped them all down, because the county police says the only way they can enforce them clean on property is have no trespassing sign, okay? So they, they tried to abide by that, but they're just, I'm sorry, it's just, it's just gotten too much to try and run a business every day when this is going on next door. There's no control over there at all. They all, they opened up under the offices of a church years ago, if you're aware, okay? They do get Fred on state grant money, which there's a separation between church and state, so it's not a church, but that's under the offices they opened up, so that's what we're over the damn, they're there now, but we've got to do something about it, we've got to be able to control that, okay? I mean, they've wondered the town, and I know Mr. Brandon's doing an excellent job out there, I mean, because there's people who are truly in need, and I don't, and I don't, and I'm the first one to admit that, but there are people there who are using the system, okay? And I think we're all aware of that. But I'm running a business, I'm not running mail, we have to be able to control what's going on there. If you look at that corner, every egg, okay? They won't let them look on their property, that's fine, sort of going to the neighbor's property, they sit on the corner and everything, they can't handle people coming into my business, okay? We cannot have that, I cannot have that.
Well, I, I will tell you that I will go over there tomorrow. I haven't met the new executive director, but I will go over tomorrow and I don't know what I can bring to the table, but I will tell you I will go over and see, see, is, I don't know if it's a male or female?
Female.
Female.
Daniel? Mayor, if you can go forward and do an update with you.
I think we go over together, I think we'll go over and we will have a discussion, and let's see what it can bring.
I certainly appreciate that.
I'd say nine, nine-thirty, we'll go over. Okay.
Anything, gentlemen, ladies, you can do, I would certainly appreciate.
We're gonna try, let's see what we can do.
You know, this is the first final appearance.
I saw it, listen, I think, we talked about it when you, before you came in, it was, and I saw it the other day and it was a mess, it was.
It was bad out there today because not only do they align the corner, they also align the sidewalk, and then when kids are using the sidewalk for those who they gotta walk around them, it's, it's just bad, and if you come in from Delaware, it's not a good image for the town of Elton, just to constantly see that every day.
Well, if you're aware, I, if you're aware, I know a lot of the officer, both state county, on the county town, Walmart seems to be a dropping point for the Delaware State Police. And the Delaware residents, Walmart drop them, Waffle House is a drop-off for the New York Police Department.
Yes.
Bring them from Newark, drop them off at Waffle House, and the town police have to deal with them.
We drop them off, and we drop them off at the Green Turtle. So we take them back, we take them back too. Thank you, Donnie.
All right, well, thank you for, thanks for letting me.
Thanks for coming in.
We'll report to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Have some coffee when we come over. Not making any arrangements for us. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Thank you all, I'd like to have a motion for a closed meeting? To discuss, consider acquisition, acquisition of real estate. In a second, any discussion? Hearing none, no? Dan, I'd like for you to be in our meeting. Chief, you can stay for the meeting also. Yeah, I think he's, yeah, I think he's coming back. And we will not grieve the meeting.